And in the interim between the last meeting and this meeting, actually on Friday, as you recall, I sent a letter to the county saying that I believe we need to pay commercial disposal fees. I got the response back, which I anticipated saying that you should pay commercial disposal fees. And during the interim, the trash hauler Goodfellows had gone to an administrative hearing with the county and they refined a bunch of money and they appealed that up to the Department of Administrative Hearings. And the hearing officer ruled Friday and basically came in and said that the school board has home rule powers, that we are not controlled by the trash flow control ordinance, that unless it's expressly stated that they have taken away some of those powers, that we're entitled to do everything that we want to do except if it's prohibited by the Constitution or general law. And it said that they can move the trash from the county and take it wherever they want under our home rule exemption because we can control how we would like to do that. I have not spoken to the county attorney. I can't, I don't want to tell you what legally I think they may or may not do so that I'm not giving away anything to them, but I will probably, I actually not probably ever going to send another letter based on this saying that, you know, based upon this ruling is just another thing of why we should not have to pay the commercial disposal fees because of the home rule powers of the school board.
Board members, any questions? Mr. Wallace at this time?
Yes, I've got a question. So we're not paying those fees. We put them on notice and the court ruling has ruled basically in our favor.
Well, we were not a party to this. Okay. This was between the Goodfellows and the county, but it is the DOAS, the Department of Administrative Hearing judge, administrative law judge, ruled and said that we have home rule powers and unless it's explicitly contrary in a statute, we can have the power, you know, the powers to govern ourselves underneath certain other Florida statutes that says we have control over our facilities and our plants and sanitation and everything else, said that because we have that power, they do not have to comply with the trash flow control ordinance and therefore their, all their fines and everything else go away, which dovetails into that we have home rule power. If they're allowed to take the trash out of the county, we don't have to, should not be a disposal fee for the, using the landfill.
Correct.
So yes, we put them on notice. I think one payment cycle has come through since then. There's probably not going to be another payment cycle until maybe October. It's every quarterly, so it's probably in October, but they are on notice that we're not going to, not going to pay that.
And if I remember, that was in the neighborhood of about $28,000 a year or a year.
It's roughly $27,000, $28,000 a year, correct.
So right now, we're going to be kind of on hold. We're not paying those fees. The administrative judge, DOAS judge, has ruled that our home rule would allow us to be exempt from those fees. However, there may be an appeal.
Correct. They still have, this just happened on Friday. They have, it's actually different. I think they have to file a petition for writ of certiorari, which is different than just filing an appeal to the circuit court. I think they have to actually petition on up to either into the appellate court arena to do that based upon their ordinance, which I have not read the chapter 82 ordinance because it didn't apply until now.
Right.
Like just terrifying.
Yes.
They didn't rule that we're exempt from paying the fees. They just ruled that Goodfellows was not in violation of the trash ordinance by taking our trash outside the county.
Right.
Fee issue is something separate that we've done on our own, so to speak.
Yeah, this certainly helps us because what it basically, and I can read you the parts of it, it talked about whether the statutory grant of control to this, to the county over the collection of solid waste expressly prohibits the school board from exercising its home rule powers in a contrary manner. It said no, that we can use our home rule powers to control our own garbage collection. So it basically said that they don't have control over the garbage collection.
It basically supports our argument for not paying.
Correct. It's not correct. It is not directly on point and we are not a party to this, but it does come in there and state that we have home rule powers and are not subject to the flow control ordinance, which by implication means we aren't subject to the other ordinance as either.
Right.
So, and it's, it's a good ruling for us.
Yes. And I would hope that we can amicably solve this by moving forward from here.
Right.
I know at one time there was a discussion or talking about going back and getting years passed, years worth of fees were paid. You know, I'm just looking forward. I'm going ahead and, you know, I would like to think that, you know, that will be the fair thing, you know, in my mind that, you know, I guess we don't know, the county's still going to respond to your letter.
Correct. I mean, this, like I said, this, I think, came out Friday.
Right.
And so I, I know the board accounting commissioner's had a meeting today. I did not contact the board accounting commissioner attorney. They usually start workshops in the morning and everything, so I'll try to get in touch with her, but she also needs time to read and digest it.
And really the ball's kind of in their court, right, on how they're going to respond to us and we don't have to do anything more right now, do we?
No. I mean, the options are to, I wouldn't say do nothing, but just not pay and wait. They are, we can either file a lawsuit and, or they can file a lawsuit or we can request the dispute resolution process of chapter 164. As it stands right now, I'll probably, I'm just going to send another letter saying based upon this is additional information. We don't, we don't see the legal authority for you to make us pay the fees and that kind of puts the ball back in the ring.
Is there any other governing entities that this impacts at this time that we have?
May that we have?
Well, with us, any agreements that we have with other governmental agencies?
It may.
Okay.
Well, other governmental agencies, maybe some municipalities, and then obviously you have the board account, you know, the county, I'm not quite sure what other governmental...
That's what, that's really what I mean was just, I know we have other agreements with that and I didn't know how this could happen.
And it's worth pointing back and taking out like some of those other agreements. You know, obviously under the, in a local agreement statute, which was cooperating with other governments, you know, provide services and exchange facilities and two different things like that, what this is basically, which goes back into the part which is probably easier if I read exactly what it says to... To exercise all powers performed on due beings, well, that's just related to the school plan. Eyes, I'm sorry. Back to here. Basically, a district school or a department may exercise any power for school purposes except, except as expressly prohibited by the state constitution or general law. So obviously if the constitution says one thing, or if the legislature passes a law that says, you know, the school board cannot do this, then, you know, then we can't, then we can't do what the legislature, it's kind of like the sovereign immunity that we discussed earlier. I mean, it has to be explicit, explicitly waived by the legislature for us to waive sovereignty unless we contractually agree to do it. So that's basically what this says unless the constitution or statutes say something expressly otherwise, we're kind of like able to govern ourselves. Which way is for me? And we are different than other local governmental agencies, which are created by the executive branch or by the state too. So there, those entities may have sovereign immunity by being a branch of the government, but most of them do not have the right powers. No problem. Outside of that, I don't think there's anything else that's going to crush them.
Uh huh. Thank you. Mr. Clutter?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Blocker? Mr. Mullin?
Yes, I have two things that I would like to give to the board in reference to things that have gone on recently that I want the board to be aware of. One of those deals with accelerated reader program. I've asked, have that program looked at a little more closely. I've heard from a lot of people, a lot of teachers and employees in the schools regards to the benefits of the accelerated reader program. Probably all of you are aware of that move to go from a server-based program to a web-based program and the fees that are associated with that. But I really have been interested in finding or using a way to motivate students to read, young students, elementary school students is where I've kind of delved into and I find that everyone really likes the AR program, but there are issues that I think we should discuss as a board. I know today I met with Mr. Heber, with Mr. Clutter, Mr. Rolland, Dr. Geddis, and Mrs. Kirby to kind of discuss where they're, where they're going with the AR program. And I don't know, you know, they're looking into it. Mr. Heber was very responsive and I know he's going to be looking and Mr. Clutter, we had a very good meeting. I mean, I was educated on some things too, but I just have really heard from those people that are involved with the AR program, the great benefits. When I think of myself as a young boy in Citrus County Schools, at Emress Primary School, it was hard to get me to read. I wish I would have read before, but when I did read, it was something I really loved to do. And I just think that if we have a program that motivates young people to read, that's what I want to do. I want to promote that. I want to give teachers the tools necessary for them to do the job and that's why I'd like to have a discussion. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if that would be at the level of workshop right now, I'm not really sure.
Well, Mr. Dodd, just so you know, and the AR program, I know it's new to you, perhaps this issue, this is one though that we actually have quite a bit of background on and we're, we can certainly maybe have a conversation, but some of this has to do with staff. This is not a decision that the board makes if the staff is not recommending that this move forward. And this is a curriculum, this is a management issue, this is a superintendent conversation. And I will tell you, as a new board member, I had the AR conversation that came up. I spent over a year on that conversation with people and I can see smiling faces from Ms. Bryant because a lot of us have. I will tell you that while you may have heard from some, there's also another side. And there's a huge cost and there is a question as to whether it's really in the best interest to go in that direction when we have other products. So it's, it's difficult for us to now start going in and saying, we want that product. That's really not the board's place to do that. That's not how we function. It's for the staff to then come and say they are going to recommend a product or not for us to approve. We don't select a product. We give a thumbs up or down to a product.
Well, then the administration has a problem at hand because a lot of these AR programs are going to go by the wayside because they're not supported anymore and there's not going to be that motivation for children to read. And so my direction would be then, we need to do something to help children, to make, to motivate them and get them excited about reading. And I'm not talking about reading that is going to be something that you have to take a series of tests on. I'm talking about the love of reading. There's a correlation between reading levels and test scores. There's a correlation between reading and communication abilities, reading and writing. Those are things that I want to see bolstered in the district. So that's, as a board, we can certainly give that direction. If AR is not going to be the method that we go by, then what is?
Is there a scores that you're seeing that you're needing improvement? I'm, you know, I mean, I want to see math scores up. I want to see science scores up. You know, what you're saying is, is that's part of our state of the district, that we go over that data and we review that data and then if there is a need to set new expectations on that, then we do that. One of the concerns that I have when it comes to AR is that for nearly every administrator, for nearly every teacher, there is a different philosophy on it. AR, reading counts, you know, success maker. We could start going through and start talking about a lot of products that are, are involved in reading, but again, we have to be careful of what our role is and what our, and what the superintendent and her staff's role is. So I would say that one of the concerns that I'm just bringing up is that we have to be careful when we say, this is a program and I've heard. I think we've all, we've all are familiar with the AR program and I'm glad that you spent that time to do that. The AR program has changed and frankly, the school district has already no longer purchased that program. So the only ones utilizing that then are schools that have continued to use that, not the limited directive of the district. Is that correct, Mr. Mullin?
I'm sorry? One school by, four changes. I was asking.
But other than that, it's not a district directive, it's not a district expectation to use the program because we've no longer purchased it.
Originally purchased individually by schools as a reading answer. Say quick word.
And I do appreciate the time that we had with Mr. Dodd today because it did provide us some background. For those of you who've been in Citrus County, you know accelerated reader is a old-time program. It's been around for a long time and it really had a avenue. And again, the individual schools actually did purchase that. I don't think we ever did a grand district-wide purchase of the program like we did with success maker.
We did, I think, at one point though, allow the budget with the tests to be out of certain funding that you provided.
It's all changed.
And that, and that we sunsetted a number of years ago.
Talking about...
Purchasing of the additional star reading tests.
Yes, the stars, yes.
But they're good.
We were using that as an evaluation tool, like first year that that came out for, I believe K1, 2 teachers.
But even the AR tests now are, have they stopped?
Yes.
That's new, correct?
When we basically shared with the schools is that there would be another stage to this purchase. It was, they, schools were able to develop their own tests, my understanding, through the accelerated reader program that they had on their campus. They could actually generate their own tests and then work through it with accelerated reader. The problem is that any new materials, any new books that a school purchased, they had to actually utilize this enterprise system, which Mr. Dodd chaired, that's that web-based program.
And I know that the web-based program, which covers both accelerated math as well as accelerated reader, and you can purchase it a number of different ways, included all the tests as opposed to just a limited number of tests. So you had an expanded inventory of books. But again, I think we sunsetted doing that, I'm thinking at least two or three years ago. Because we haven't even permitted the purchase of those tests.
I believe that what we basically said is that if there are any tests that were existing, they would use those and still continue to use the AR program. But again, the new tests that would have to be purchased could only be done on new books that were actually being, just coming out that AR was actually writing to their enterprise system. Like, am I explaining that?
Yes. To me, I understand that. But I also understand that, what, nine of the 11 elementary schools are still using AR?
Sure, they're using that, the version that they currently have.
So that version could go away, could crash any day and the school would be completely out of the AR program.
Yes.
And, and I think that one of the things that we've talked about is the difference between, for example, one of the schools that may pre-use it pervasively and many of the schools have used it, but when you ask them it, it's not part of their day-to-day reading program. It is just an added amount. So here's the question that I think is, is if there's a change that the elementary ed and ed services are saying they want to make to the AR program, then I think that needs to come from them. It's not a directive from us.
Well, the directive is we need to motivate children to read. The directive is we need to encourage young people to read and that is, you know, a foundational belief of mine.
Are we not doing that?
Everyone, well, this program is doing it.
No, no, no. Are we not doing that other than through AR?
If this program goes away, that, there's going to be a huge void.
Have you, what, what gives you that determination from all of our schools? What information did you, did you glean that, that states that?
I have spoken to numerous individuals in our schools that are involved with the program, who absolutely love the program, who are saying, what can we do to get this, these new books and these new tests? And I, you know, those are people that I trust and believe. And so if we need, that's why, maybe we do need to have that discussion. If, if your perception is that nobody really wants AR, my perception is just the opposite. My perception is people want AR. And, you know, it's any day when a server crashes, that school will be out of it. That's what Ms. Kirby told me today. I mean, Pleasant Grove, they use AR heavily. Now, I'm not going to speak for her, I'm just talking for what we said in the meeting, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Clutter, if, you know...
The tests that they have purchased and that they're generating, they utilize with the system that they currently have.
Yes, right. And so my question too is, is there a way, is there a program that we can develop, the district can develop on their own? Is there a program to save the money?
Ms. Powers?
Yes, with AR, with AR, and I've used it before, I was explaining this in the morning, there's a philosophical approach to using AR, but there might not be another reading program, right? So when you're talking about reading, the first discussion has to be what exactly do you mean by a reading program? And when AR, exposure to books or books or books to read all the time, but it's not the teaching of the, it's an approach to breaking words apart and that sort of stuff. So if that's what you're interested in, then there's a difference there. So I think we have to have to see what we mean by a reading program and what we want to do. And if it's necessary to do, maybe those who really like AR and they are defendants of AR, you've been talking to and they, they want that to continue. But there are others who would say, well, no, I see reading in a different light. So that's a pretty broad discussion and then break it down and see, okay, what do we really want? If that's what we're going to do, we're going to talk about reading, what do we really want? What is reading?
Can I say, if you want us to bring something back, we can bring back the entire, what we do with reading in general. I mean, we use success maker, we're trying Stride Academy in some elementary schools. I mean, instead of just focusing on what we're doing to get kids to check books out of library, we can...
I think that's the more broad conversation because what concerns me is to say that, that the only reason kids are reading is because of AR and if they don't have AR, then our students aren't reading. That concerns me that that statement would be said because there isn't any indication, I think, of that.
I think what I hear Mr. Clutter saying is he wants kids to read.
Absolutely.
So do I.
Absolutely.
I think we have common ground there.
I think we all have common ground there.
If we, we can bring back, if you would like, at the next workshop or maybe more time than that, or bring back the entire reading program at the elementary and all the different things that we're using.
That'd be good.
And maybe then if the board has some input at that point, we can hear it.
A lot of work. Now, you know, someone like Kit Humbo has been to that a dozen times and she'd be a valuable tool to help us.
There's been a lot of discussion about AR and, you know, AR is in place, obviously in a couple of middle schools and one of our high schools had used AR. But again, when we were making a shift to Common Core a few years ago, before we changed to the Florida standards, the thought was that the level of rigor for that response for the reading was not where it needed to be to make that investment for kids.
And nonfiction reading is, is an issue that we found with the AR program as well.
It's not that we don't want kids to be avid readers, but then, you know, we only have so much time, we only have so much money, we only have so much of everything. So where's our best resources put? That conversation to this point's only included one elementary principal. If it's what's needed at one school, it needs to include nine other elementary principals. It's not one elementary.
And I will tell you that I've heard it from one predominant principal is who speaks about that AR program with this passion and I appreciate that. But in a broader conversation, there's a lot of products, a lot of services, and they would say there's a multifaceted approach to reading that our elementary schools take and it's not based on one singular program.
But let us bring you back what we're doing and how AR fits into that currently at the different schools and what, what level they're, they're using it for and then we can have that discussion with the board then, if that's what you want to do.
I would like that, Mr. Mullin, but I do not want to take time away from our teachers and our administrators. If it's just, if it's just an overview, a quick overview, that'd be fine. I don't, I don't want bells and whistles and...
Our teachers won't need to be involved in the presentation, that'll be my staff. They got all the time in the world.
I, I would agree with, with Ms. Bryant.
So you want the three minute time roll?
Exactly.
And I, I know, Mr. Clutter, you've done this before, you've gone through this...
Can I just share?
Yes.
I feel compelled to do that. Since I've been at the district office for the last 10 years, we have gone through a rigorous textbook adoption and again, major tool of instruction. Just Reads Office is very alive and well and just basically provides us with that opportunity to research. Again, you've got the core comprehensive program, then you've got the supplemental programs, none of which the AR falls into. We're talking about programs like the Storytown, the programs, We the Edge, all those things, the Read 1E that we used to have. These are the programs that we're talking about in regards to developing reading skills. What Mr. Dodd and we talked about today is again, that generation of the love for reading and getting kids excited about reading. I was the same young man who had those challenges with the reading. So and again, Dr. Geddis was there and again, media specialists do an admirable job of basically every program in their school to just get that love of reading out there, get in that high interest rate going with the students, to get them excited about reading, whether it be goal setting and things like that. We talked about just another ways to be able to share those experiences that students get when they're reading a book that is more Florida standards-like, more interactive, more technology displaying of what they've learned. So again, I just say, we're, you're right. We've held on to a program for so long and it's just an opportunity for us to be able to see what's out there because recall, that's really what AR is really measuring. And again, gets the kids excited, love the program, but again, when I'm sitting there looking at the funds that we have and the time, it's, it had a time for us to basically reconsider that. So it's a conversation that we've had with the principals, a share with Mr. Dodd, that we will continue to have that conversation next Tuesday when we meet with our principals.
Let me ask you, I know the libraries across the district at the elementary level are, the, the books are Lexile leveled, so with that, with that SRI Lexile leveling system in place, do we have programs that can provide assessments so the teachers don't have to create because time is so limited? So looking at just basic comprehension on a novel, they check out?
That's another thing that Mr. Dodd brought up as well. Well, what could be the substitute? Is there a program out there or something that we could generate in order to be able to measure? Again, Lexile levels came about when we started doing a lot of the SRI program in Citrus County. Some of you know, we wanted to read about that program. So are there programs or quick little assessments like that? I'm not sure I'm spout for, but I can look into that. But now, again, Lexile levels are big. We look at those when we do the textbook adoption. They're basically a way to quickly measure students or a book's readability at that grade level.
Are we still using FAIR at times to determine some of that?
Secondary level is using FAIR. It's a three assessment windows. The elementary school's looking at implementing this year Fast Bridge, a little bit more of a beefier reading assessment tool that we're, we're excited about using, leaving some data.
And that's what I was going to say, we're using assessment tools to determine that. Something that what I think we all know too is we've all become, and many of our students are different readers than they were 10 years ago and beyond, partly because of the devices. The, the way we read and get information is no longer linear. We are constantly popping around to different things. So, and what we have learned, right, wrong, and different, is that our Florida standards do not necessarily talk about endurance reading, stamina reading. In fact, it's, it's far more condensed in its information and AR does not provide that tool for helping us achieve those goals of, of reading with our students.
It is quick and simpler for, for teachers to be able to track how many books a student has read. Some teachers do prefer though, to use other forms of assessment other than those question... Some teachers do prefer though, to use other forms of assessment other than those questions. So not, not every teacher is a fan of AR. Some teachers like to use different, different forms of assessment outside of just testing the questions.
Graphic organizers.
Yes, to test comprehension. Right. And, you know, one of the things, they went web-based with this program. I mean, the last thing I want to do is spend money for licenses for students who are not using the program. I mean, that's, that's a waste, and I, I don't want to see that. Is it, are there other options out there? That's what I think I'm hoping districts looking at. But I'm not endorsing AR. I'm endorsing a method that would allow students to read and have a reward system, have a point system, have, to learn, to get that love of reading. I'm looking at the elementary school level is where my focus is. And that's what I bring up today. And I have spoken at Thrall City and at Emmerich Primary School, so we can add those two schools to Pleasant Grove. So they are, um, there's interest there. Now, Mr. Kennedy, you mentioned about the administrative decision, and yes, um, you know, I, I do see that. I do agree with that. And I even said in the meeting today, you know, if their principal is not going to support it, then when they come to me with an issue, I'll tell them, "You need to talk to your principal." They're not willing to support it, um, but I'm hoping that the principals, and I haven't seen that, why they're not, but they're aware of what the teachers and what the desires are of their, of their staff. So I bring that to the board because I have seen it and maybe it's been discussed in the past, it hasn't. Since I've been on the board, I don't remember it being discussed when I, when I was at meetings. So it's just something that I would like to bring, because I do see that this system is, they've been running on Band-Aids for, has it been three years now? Is this the fourth year or the third year?
I believe it's the fourth year.
Third year?
I don't know.
Yeah. So I'm just saying, hey, I recognize that there's, there's an, an issue that should be addressed by the district. And so I'm trying to come about it from the big picture, not being, and not being the ones to say, "I want this or I want that." So I just, I just.
And I appreciate that. I will tell you, I, I came from, um, my kids had gone to schools that were AR schools. And people, I mean, those that have had students that are in them, they'll know, they're an AR school. And you could tell, they gave awards based on AR points. It was a predominant part, there was an AR board that had points in every room, and that was the reward system. There are schools that said, you know, if it's, if a classroom teacher wants to adopt that, that's fine, but that is not the expectation from the administration. And so there comes a point when our staff has to say that when we have priorities and when we have to make decisions, um, we're going to make what the best tools are that we have within the financial means that we have. And what is good for one has been what we have done at the others. The reason the AR program conversation hasn't come up in part was because it's sunsetted. We had that conversation. There has just been some schools that, that have not been interested in letting that go. And that's fine. But then their question is, why isn't the district funding it? And of course, my response would be, have you spoken to the executive team? Have you spoken to the curriculum team as to what they are providing? Because again, even just like teachers, we would say, "Teachers, talk to your principals." The principals, I would say, "Have you talked to Mr. Mullin? Have you talked to Mr. Clotter?" Those are conversations that they come up and they have in their principals' meetings. And they have those conversations, and then it percolates up to us. And again, I, I appreciate the schools that you've visited. Some of them are my SAC-related schools, so I'm very familiar with them. I have spent a great deal of time at, at the schools, I know the things you're talking about. I'm just saying that it is not necessarily pervasive throughout the district, what you've seen at those two schools. That's not to say people, if you ask a question, can you, do you want it? The answer's going to almost always be, "Of course they want it."
And everything else.
And everything else.
Everything else.
And so that's, that's the challenge we're under. We, you can have anything you want, you can't have everything you want. And we're in that position that our staff has to tell us what those priorities are and where, what decisions they're going to be. You know, it's hard for us sometimes, when a textbook's adopted, we don't get to say, "We want that one." We just have to say, "We voted up or down." That's, that's really hard, but that's where our decision is. So I agree with the expectation, we want students to be learners. I don't think there's a, uh, readers, I don't believe there's someone up here that doesn't. But if you're asking me to say, "This program is the only reason there'll be readers," that concerns me, because I just don't think that that's, that there's data that supports that right now. So, and I'm, and by the way, I want you to know with all my heart and respect, I appreciate what you're trying to do, and it doesn't mean that, that what you're going to do won't accomplish what you want in the end. I'm just saying, we, you know, standing up there, we, these are things we have gone through. And, and sometimes what it is, is you're new, and I, I kind of feel like, it's not new, but you're the new person that they can ask these questions, that they didn't get the answer they wanted from someone else. And that's the only concern that I have, is that we are rehashing something on that.
Well, I'm hoping that as things progress and new things come up, that there would be something else then that could be brought in or something may be developed in-house. I don't think that's very feasible, but I'm just saying that, you know, we all are one vote, and it takes three votes to, to, to make decisions. And so, um, you know, I just want it to be, as my say on the board, that I want it to be brought up for further discussion. And I was very happy with the meeting, you know? It was an education for me, like I said, it's a good time for them to look at things. And I hope that, um, I hope that we can have another discussion on it, I really do. The other thing is, that I wanted to say, uh, that there was an event that took place that I did not participate in, but it was the School Justice Partnership. Mrs. Alagretta is here, she went on behalf of the school district. And it was at the courthouse, and I wish, in some ways, I, I would have been there. But Mrs. Alagretta was there, and it's something that when we involve the judges, I think it's important for this board to know what is being discussed and talked about, because when the name of the conference is School Justice Partnership, well, school is, is a big part of that, it's the first word. And so we want to make sure that when we're involved, that everyone knows what's going on. So Mrs. Alagretta is going to just give us a little overview of what took place and what is to come. And I don't like any of our board, none of our board members, you were the sole school representative, except for the school resource officer, correct?
Well, I'll share with you if I can.
Can you pull the mic in front of him?
In answer to that question, I wasn't invited. I found out about it perchance. I was not, nobody in the school system, as I looked through the whole distribution list, was included in, in the email. I found out about this through the Community Alliance, which one of our social workers participates in their monthly meetings, and it was shared. And I thought, wow, this is pretty interesting, knowing that it does deal with the courts, and that's a big part of our world, it's student services, I thought it would be great to participate. So just to give a little backup to that, I did want to share that it wasn't that other school members weren't invited and didn't attend. There was nobody on, the closest one that, other than Kevin Purington, who was on there, was Mr. Bradshaw's office. So, um, I'm glad I went. And it was last week that I attended that seminar, it wasn't.
You just crashed it, is that the deal?
I did.
Okay.
I did. Listen, it was being catered by Deco Cafe.
All right.
It was at the courthouse, and it was titled Improving School Partnership, excuse me, School and Justice Partnership. So you can see the ring to it, I thought, wow, school, somebody needs to be there.
Absolutely.
The invite to attend was generated through the magistrate, Keith Schenk. He works very closely with the judges. The guest speaker that facilitated the meeting was Judge Stephen Teskey. He's nationally known, he's a nationally known judge from Clayton, Georgia. And he's nationally known because he has worked greatly to improve the relationship between the justice system and the schools in his district. Just to share with you what the focus was, is of that seminar, was to improve the relationship between schools and the justice department. And the main focus is keeping kids out of the courts and in schools, which I think everybody wants to do that. They want to do this, the goal is by reducing school arrests and referrals to the court, hence keeping students out of the court system. There was a lot of conversation generated, um, through Deputy Bogart that was there, myself, that, uh, through the sheriff's office, we are doing that. We are, we, same law enforcement, is not having as many arrests. They are writing more teen citations to have students participate in teen court, to help them understand their behavior, to help them be a consequence for that behavior, but not involving them in the court systems. Part of the charge of the group there was to identify some stakeholders in the community who they felt could be a part of this, um, goal, and how they could hopefully link into more resources that are available for these students. Because right now, all we have is teen court as a resource. There will be some next steps in another meeting, September 29th in the afternoon. I'm committed to attend that meeting. At that point, they're hoping to identify facilitator to move forward in their direction to improve relationships with the school system and the justice system and keeping kids out of the court system. They're going to look for other areas to explore, other resources other than teen court. And they hope to have this accomplished within a year, before the next school year starts.
And you said that they may want us to be involved with the MOU, is that correct?
Well, their hope is to eventually write an interagency agreement that would come out of our meetings that we're having. Just to give you an idea of who attended that meeting, um, a lot of people were invited. DCF membership, KCI, youth and family. Unfortunately, there was nobody from, um, their organization. There were several guardian ad litem's who were there. Several judges, um, were there. Mary Hatch was there for both the days. Judge Thomas, um, did come to both days for a short period of time. There was a representative there, Darla Garber, who oversees teen court. The public defender was there, the assistant state attorney, one representative from KCI, myself, and Deputy Bogart. A lot of conversation was had. I, I ensured, I let the group know that I was not a person who could make decisions and policy changes. That was definitely the school board's charge, that in talking with law enforcement, the school board and law enforcement are two different entities. What might be a reason for an arrest through a law enforcement agent, we would have different consequences as per our code of conduct. So a lot of conversation was had. To inform the board as well, there are two counties who currently are part of the School Justice Partnership. They are Palm Beach and Broward County. If you want to get some more information about it, it is schooljusticepartnership.org. No, no decisions were made at this meeting. From my perspective, the people who are the decision makers were not there at that time. So I think it's, it's, it's kind of a grassroots, just getting some understanding. Conversation was had and discussed about what are the most common arrests that happen at school? And the public defender, um, gave his, um, experience and what he has seen. And many of those arrests, Deputy Bogart had shared that citations are written, it's not always just an arrest. So it's not just what is there on the surface, there's a little bit more digging going on.
I can tell you that this came out of, out of Broward County. I think Broward was quite the first county in, in Florida to do this. And it was based upon the amount of arrests that were coming out of the school system. I think that there was other outside organizations that were involved based on disparaging, or not disparaging, but, you know, stat, um, statistical, you know, like there were more certain types of students being arrested than other types, and all this other type of stuff. And what they did was, they went through a very big process down there. And we discussed this as a board, I don't remember, I don't believe that you were on the board yet, Mr. Dodd. But they discussed this, and really what it is, is they had to go through an entire process where they got, and it's a little more difficult down there because of the size. They got every municipal police chief, every, the sheriff, all the DCF, the juvenile court judge, the, all these massive amounts of people, the state attorney's office, the public defender's office, to agree on prosecuting students in certain circumstances. And then they believed that they built a place called Promise Village, and which is kind of like our Renaissance center, to, um, to, um, put these children at, instead of putting them through the court system. So it's, I, I believe at one point in time, I had circulated the Promise Village in our local agreement, or I have a copy of it or something like that, if you want to see it. But it was quite an undertaking, but it was more along the lines of, I think there was, ACLU was involved, and I think that the other big organizations were all involved, and it was all along. That, that was the real reason for it.
And one of the reasons they invited all the, um, community services that support children, work with systems, is children who are in conflict or are in.
You have to have all of them agree to do it, or else it doesn't fall apart.
Correct, correct. Also, um, it's taken Judge Teskey almost a decade to get all of this. They, they have a very large grant, they write every year, and it's funded. They're, they're just looking for different resources, as we are, to help students with their situation so that they're not in the court systems.
I was just, at first when you started talking, there was a program called the Justice Teach.
Justice Teach.
Is that what that one is?
If we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, it was a different one, where attorneys and judges go into the classrooms and teach, and teach about. That's not this.
No, but we do have that program in one of our elementary schools, right? So again, Mr. Dodd, it would be important, and I agreed to let you know what, what is being shared. And, um, you know, I'm just there listening, seeking, and at one point, I had given, I asked the question, you know, so the focus, you know, keeping students out of court, what other resources are out there that would enable us to do that? And they had no answers for that. I asked about monies, and I was told very assertively, "There are no monies." So knowing that Clayton, Georgia gets a lot of money from, from a grant and from, um, Chamber of Commerce and some other areas, we are not at that point yet. Is that something we could look into possibly? But I'm just going to represent the school district, listen to what's going on. The other reason I was prompted in Clayton was their graduation rate was extremely low. Again, the arrests looked like it was targeting a certain area of students, which were very common, as it is in Citrus County. And we don't have that ratio right now. But I was very proud to share with him, and they have a high mobility rate and free and reduced. I was very quick, I had my data to share with the community there, that we have an 87% graduation rate. And even though our free and reduced, we've been a high performing district. So I shared a lot of things, and that, yes, we too want to work to keep students out of the courts. So just to let you know where we are, and I'll continue to keep you updated, that's something we want.
Thank you very much. That's all.
Okay. Ms. Powers?
Just wanted to mention, and I saw on the marquee at the Valerie Theater, that on, probably September the 11th, there would be a, a presentation that happens every year.
Okay.
And I'm trying to think of the time, it's either 12 to 7, or 12 to 7, I think, 12 to 7. So we might want to go down there and see what they have in mind.
There will be a 9/11 service at Liberty Park where the memorial is at 10:00. And then that afternoon, like you mentioned, it's going to be at the Valerie Theater. They've done it in Emmerich City Hall before, but, um, that's a great thing that Norleo does. And there's a Freedom Walk too, that evening, I believe it's at 5:00 on, on Friday.
Couple of things, first, housekeeping items. We talked about having a conversation on digital agendas or that type of thing. Because of the time, what I'd like to do is put it on for, for our conversation at the next workshop. And then we can.
What time is that workshop, on the 22nd?
Uh, that was going to be my next thing, as I wasn't sure if we knew if we were going to need a day workshop or an afternoon. Yeah, so it's probably going to be morning. Yeah. Excuse me. So I'm going to go ahead and have us add that, for us to have a conversation. The other thing too is, um, Ms. Bryant, I'm sorry, Ms. Powers will be going before the legislative, um, delegation on September 21st. I believe this is our last meeting before then. Is there any items that you all had that you'd like Ms. Power to add? This is probably the best time to share that.
We can attend, just, just.
Yeah, absolutely. It's, there's usually just one voice from, from the body. And, and that, but of course, there's nothing that prohibits someone from attending. I will tell you. I will tell you, Ms. Powers, again, to me, the Marine Science Station funding, I'm always for eliminating all state student assessments that tie teachers, to teachers' evaluations, that are tied to teachers' evaluations, but you know what I mean, an issue. I would also say that anytime they do a $44 million funding for merit-based bonuses, I would just assume that they send that money to us and let local school districts decide that. So that's just my own thinking on that.
That's a good point.
I didn't think I would get any pushback from you all. On that, I want to thank Mr. Mullin, I know we all received that email today.
Yes.
Not that we, about, we were thrilled with what you shared, but we appreciate that you're keeping our staff and teachers informed. I happen to be spouse of one, I think, Mr. Mullin, you are too, that is wondering what the heck to do. But I will tell you a bright note in all of this. Excuse me, Mr. Tim Burns at Crystal River High School. He is going to, this Saturday, sit with his students and take the ACT test in hopes of achieving an 80 percentile. Of course, the rest of us are going, I can't believe that Mr. Burns didn't get that to begin with, but he will tell you that he didn't, although I think his bragging rights would well outweigh to his students any monetary gain that he gets, to be able to tell them on a daily basis that he had no problem sitting for that. I also want to lift out, recently, I volunteer as a parent volunteer and assistant coach with the swim team, and we had to take a bus to Marion County. The bus driver, and it was actually Bob Adams, was outstanding, both in providing just a great environment for the kids and anyone who knows, taking a bunch of high schoolers that are excited about any type of activity they're going to can be challenging to frustrating. He was excellent. When we got to the swim meet, he took out his own stopwatch and was timing for us as a backup, because he just wanted to make sure he was helping us all out, and I just thought that was so cool. But I think the other neat thing, and it gives us a testament to this board, to this superintendent and your staff, the Marion County teacher-coach came up and goes, you guys have a bus! And we're like, yeah, why wouldn't we have a bus? We don't get buses. We have to figure a way how to get to the meets. And I thought, again, it's not simply that we're committed to after-school activities, whether it's academics, athletics, arts, but it's also that, as Mr. Dodd would remind us, it's about safety. And I think one of the best, safest ways for our students to travel to those events is willing to find ways, we determine, is in a school bus. So thank you, board members, for your support of that, because it does come at those tough times. And lastly, I want to hand out, or was it, here it is, and I'll have this sent to you in an email, but I want to pass this out, let me just read it for the record. This is a student from Central Ridge that said, "Dear Citrus County School Board, I am from Central Ridge Elementary, and I just wanted to say thank you for letting fourth grade have iPads. The iPads are really helpful because we don't have to do tests on paper. We can do them on our iPads. Thank you very much for letting schools have this great tool." And I'll share that with you, you all can see the names on it for your own, and I'll have that email sent to you all. Again, thank you for supporting our kids. And with that, is there anything else that we need? If nothing else, we are adjourned.